I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, October 16th. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have Board members Crystal Brockie, John Ashmead, Peter Tensing, Paula Cole. I'm Christine Malik. We also have Superintendent Yunowski and our Student Board Representative Matthew Kifflue. I would like to remind all of us of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. So we will start with review and approval of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Tensing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. We had no requests for public comment today. If you were unable to make a request in advance of tonight's meeting, we have two ways for you to share thoughts with us. One is to complete a board comment sheet so that you can write out your thoughts and give them to us tonight. We would review your comments before our next meeting. And the other is for you to request to participate in public comment for a future board meeting. So thank you for your attention and respect for this process. So we'll start with information and proposals, and we do not have delegations?
We do not today.
No delegations. So reports and information from school sources and the superintendent update.
Alright, so I am excited to turn our attention to page three and page four of our board packet. We received information from the University of Minnesota in relation to college in the schools. On a yearly basis, we received a letter and an update from the University of Minnesota regarding college in the schools related to the amount of credits that our students have achieved. It also lays out the amount of tuition that their family has saved. And I'm so excited to report back, and it's on page four of our board packet. This year, we actually had 1,451 University of Minnesota credits earned, which is up by several hundred credits over last year, saving their families approximately $700,000 of University of Minnesota credit. So one of the things to be proud of, and just as a reminder, we have PSEO classes we offer. We have AP classes that we offer, and this is one of our additional college-bearing credit classes that we offer. We have college in the schools where they're teaching and learning University of Minnesota curriculum with our teachers trained by University of Minnesota professors and following along with the University of Minnesota standards, gathering 1,451 credits. The other piece I would like to point your attention to on page four is that we had 201 unduplicated count of students. So 201 of our students, or about 20 percent of our students total, participated in this. So if you think about the number of students we have in 12th grade, for example, about 300. Number of students we have in 11th and 12th grade combined, around 500. We're talking about 35 to 40 percent of our 11th and 12th graders participated in college in the schools, so that's pretty exciting information to share. And also, if you look at the racial demographic breakdown, it's actually pretty significantly different than it had been previously. And so you'll see that there is an almost 50 percent split between white students and students of color. If you recall, when we began this work a couple of years ago, we had about 40 percent or 30 to 40 percent students of color. We've now increased and continued to systemically increase up to 40 percent or 50 percent students of color. So some areas for us to really be proud of, continuing to grow with college in the schools, continuing to grow with the representation matching more closely to our students, and continuing to get great value for our families with college credits. With that, are there any questions about our college in the schools program or our college in schools update?
Is it open just to 11th and 12th graders? Based on what you just said, that seemed to be the implication.
For the most part, there are students who are significantly advanced in 9th and 10th grade who take it, but the majority of these classes are 11th and 12th graders.
So in their summary under student success, where they kind of list the percent registrations resulting in a grade of C or better and the rest of that, it would be interesting to see Richfield's actual numbers on those to compare. I know that we did see that, you know, a couple of years ago, but with the changes, I think it would be good to see what our students are doing.
Okay, so when the high school comes back, we'll ask them to review the success rate in each of our college-bearing credit classes.
They do have it on the page four for Richfield High School. It's not broken down at all, but it's 87 percent.
Right, 80.
Right, not broken up by subgroup, but overall.
Yeah. Matthew, do you take any college in the schools courses? And if so, what do you think of them?
I do take college in the schools courses. I find them to be more difficult than AP classes, but you don't have to take a test at the end of the year. However, I do feel like with the expansion of courses, teachers have told me, like, and like opening up to more students, teachers have told me that they feel like they need to slow down the pace or like kind of not water down the courses, but pretty much that in order to allow the wider range of students to keep up in the course. So that's something that I did notice.
Thank you.
And for clarity, typically the credits are, you know, so the University of Minnesota credits, but I believe that there's generally acceptance of those credits throughout the Minskew system and at other states where we have reciprocity.
Yes, University of Minnesota credits are throughout. So there's a different, if you look at the three types of classes for the most part, PSEO, University of Minnesota, and AP, different schools accept different amounts of credits. So University of Minnesota credits are within all the colleges in Minnesota, in Minskew, and also states with reciprocity. So that is correct. And then some others, obviously, across the country, as they have agreements with the University of Minnesota or accept transfer credits from the U of L.
So anyway, it's an exceptional value that, you know, that our students are able to gain both cutting some time perhaps out of their post-secondary, you know, undergraduate work, moving into graduate work more quickly, as well as saving a lot of money. So there's a significant value there.
Very good.
As a parent of a Richfield, two, several Richfield grads who have taken advantage of that, I'm all for it.
Excellent. Anything else before we move on to goal draft number three, as I continue to refine based on board feedback? Alright, so we'll continue to refine the goals for superintendent in regard to the breakdown of student achievement, process goals, and individual performance. Achievement goals-wise, just as a reminder, we're going to be looking at increasing the graduation rate by 3 percent or more based on feedback from board members. We'll be presenting data in disaggregated format, so we can realistically look at all of our groups, and we'll be looking for gains from all groups of students. Similarly, we'll be looking at the MCA in disaggregated format, looking for gains in all students while also reducing the gap between our highest and lowest achieving students. And so we're going to be, again, looking for gains from all of our student groups. Just as a breakdown, there are ways similar to how the state measures and similar to how we measure in regard to Q Comp. There are three ways to look at goals. The goal met is 3 percent or larger gains. Partially met is an increase from anywhere from any gain to 3 percent. And we've had a conversation as a board about that .1 number or what that looks like. When you think about a 0 percent increase, which we're defining as goal not met, the exact same number of students begin the year proficient as end the year. So theoretically, every student has a one-year gain, or we'll call that average growth for your students. The reason it would be partially met, or suggested to be partially met beyond that, is anything above that means more students are proficient, or more students had one-plus years' gain than had previously had that. And so that would be an increase in proficiency in relation to our students. Certainly not the target that we're shooting for, but definitely better than 0 percent increase or going backwards, or a decrease, which would be goal not met. And then we'll also be presenting disaggregated group categories within all state groups. And so the state defines a large number of groups, and so we'll be able to look at that in depth as we take a look at achievement gains, both from my perspective, from leadership, but then also across the entire district. Process goals, we've changed some of the language. I believe some of it, some of the conversation ended up around smooth, and how do we measure smooth, and what do we do with sort of soft descriptions? So we're looking at an implementation and then also measuring and analyzing across all of these process goals, gathering feedback on the quality level, but changing them from smooth to mostly implementation. Transition and launch of a seventh grade day at the high school and new start times, as board feedback was, is development of a new dashboard to analyze district performance. And so that'll be a process we go about. We'll engage a wide range of people in that conversation, is how do you really define if a district, not just a superintendent, but a district is being successful. Left in effective from a referendum communication, because there's a very clear line from the state of Minnesota, you're expected as a district to have effective referendum communication, sharing information within legal compliance while not advocating. And then again, taking out the word smooth, but having systemic support of new leadership and the team at STEM, to make sure that with new leadership at STEM, that there's systemic supports to make sure that we are doing our part to make things as successful as possible. Then continuing to expand our evaluation efforts, rolling out fully equity work as we continue to move forward with Innocent Classroom and Reimagine Richfield, and then also looking at our curriculum review and alignment, which we'll also look at presenting some of that in a presentation prior to the end of the school year to the board. And then that last piece, creation of a process to walk through budgets and create a larger engagement at the spring for buildings, so that we also work to communicate that broadly, not just from a district level, but also at a building and a site level. And then as we look at those personal goals, continuing to expand and deepen rich field relationships, really looking at community survey improvement and also improving our market share, the percentage of students here choosing to remain within our schools, continuing to increase leadership attendance and participation at our extracurricular activities, a launch that will begin in winter, January, February of student, or staff-parent advisory council, which would also include students, and then also looking to analyze our overall engagement efforts from the board, administration, teachers throughout, to look at how are we structuring that throughout the entire organization. Are there questions or feedback about round three?
Just repeat for me your anticipated start time for the advisory council?
Looking at January, February. And so once communication efforts around referendum communications are completed, I'll actually be working a little bit with our communications consultant that's been supporting me to help create a system to make sure that we get voice from across our community, many of our advisories, and input groups aren't necessarily fully representative of our community, and so we're going to work very strategically to try to get voice from across our entire community that's representative within our parents, student, and staff advisory.
I appreciate the changes from the last version that we saw, so thank you very much for that. And honestly, I just thought of this as I was looking at this, so I apologize for not flagging or asking in advance, but in the expanded deepen rich field relationships section for our personal evaluation and personal goals, would our teacher and staff survey also be something that we would be able to look at as a data source for that particular goal? Because it feels like it's very much still relevant under that umbrella, but I wanted to check that would be okay.
Yes, so the community survey, we actually do one survey that's sent to staff and the community.
Oh, so you're using that as an umbrella term.
And so community survey is an umbrella term for the survey of everyone, and that is the area that we're looking to across the entire group, staff and community.
So the only thing that, I think Crystal and I had talked about this in the past, but the, or when we did the most recent review, but the increase of .1 to three, we had, I think we kind of prorated it when we figured it out. So I think my, I guess my expectation would be like maybe a little more than .1, but maybe .5 or points, something that rounds to something other than zero, how about?
Sounds good.
.6 or...
We'll make that change.
And then we could also, you know, I think one thing that we did is we kind of looked at it and didn't, didn't give it as not met, but didn't give it as, you know, partially met, like half.
Sure.
So it was just kind of prorated, but...
Sounds good. We'll make that change. Is there anything else? And then we'll just consider the...
Do you have thoughts regarding the composition of your advisory board?
I think it's going to be important to really work representatively, to try to figure out an outreach plan to make it broad-based. In the past, and this was something that was in place when I began, there were about five parents who attended the first three meetings. They were the same five parents. I believe four of the five came from the same school. They all came from the same racial and gender background, and we're all within basically the same age category. And so I don't, so after doing that for a while and advertising, figured that that might not be the most effective way to gather broad-based feedback. And so in working with Christine, the person I've been working with around communications, she has some, has done some work in the past around figuring out broad-based outreach to make sure that we have community members from in the schools, community members not in the schools. We have people representing different schools. We have people from racial and ethnic backgrounds that are different, and so bringing just broad-based diversity into that conversation, I think, makes it much more representative and valuable to our organization, and to make sure that what are often unheard voices are part of that conversation.
Good, because I know in the past it's been pretty homogeneous.
Yes, yes. And so it'll be a lot of deliberate effort to not have that be the case.
And hopefully, we can even have some good lessons learned that we can apply to our other councils into the future as we're thinking about recruiting more people to join those, because I think a lot of those same issues can apply for our other councils as well.
We had two new members of FPAC this last time, so. Good, so we will move on to commendations.
Alright, so we got a couple of commendations. One coming from Lee Wakefield, Associate Professor of Music and Morehead, writing me a letter saying that each summer, the Minnesota Music Educators sponsored all-state music camps, and students attending these camps have gone through a rigorous audition process among the elite high school musicians in Minnesota. They're held for five days in early August and have extensive immersion into high levels of music-making and skill acquisition. And so they achieve a great deal of time this year. Lee was a clarinet coach for the Minnesota All-State Symphonic Band and had the pleasure of working with two of our high school students, Molly Kleist and Bridget Wenness. It was very apparent they had received excellent instruction, and so we got a lot of feedback on our music program. And she just wanted to reach out to say thank you to all of us who foster a learning environment producing such talent, and that teachers at every age level, family support, administrative support, and community support, they're each critical components of the process. Bravo to you all, and bravo to our students, and bravo to our work in the arts. Then Betty Boyan, the Vice President of Philanthropic Programs for the Assistance League of Minneapolis-St. Paul, wrote us a letter, who was thrilled when their, our school reads chair, talked about our assembly on September 28th at Richfield Middle School, where the sixth graders and teachers participated in the Global Reader Aloud program, and also to acknowledge the Assistance League donation to the sixth graders. She actually hadn't heard in the Assistance League of the Global Reader Aloud, so it was very enjoyable for her to attend the assembly, informational as well as inspirational. Noted she also heard one of the sixth graders making the following comment. "Each of our students received a Monster Calls as a book, and they'll be doing that entire book as an entire sixth grade. 'I feel like someone really appreciates me,' said the student." Betty Boyan also said that they appreciated meeting Mayor Elliott, Superintendent Yunowski, Principal Zambrino, and so many dignitaries serving our students and our families. So they just wanted to point out that Assistance League is thrilled to be partnering with Richfield Middle School, as well as our other sites in Richfield. After all, we are neighbors, and Assistance League is part of our family. So they commend us for our work there. And then finally, Richfield Middle School parents Kelly Blumer and Mike Wyans sent a commendation to Principal Zambrino regarding the kitchen staff employees, Jody Nickel and Ann Kapeski, who are especially accommodating when their son forgot to bring his lunch to school. And so her husband and she wanted to make sure that we all heard about this, that middle school, Richfield Middle School has never let us down and give both of our children excellent opportunities. It's another example of your fabulous, dedicated staff stepping up and coming through for a student. Thank you to you and your staff for all the ways you serve hundreds of kids every day. So congratulations and thanks out to our nutrition staff, and it makes us proud that our middle school and our team over there is doing such a great job with our students and families.
Thank you. We will now move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
I will second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye and the consent agenda passes. We move on to old business and board policy review, starting with policy 206.
Policy 206 for the umpteenth review. And we even had some updates that we played out today, as we noticed some, some changes that hadn't quite gotten in. And so just as a reminder, this would be in addition to our board policy 203, and 206 is about public participation. It really talks about two different components. One has to do with setting of the agenda for the board meeting, and then one, part of it also has to do with public comment and how public comment is shared and the processes over that. So the first four sections of this particular policy, and I'm going to take a little time because I think we may have a chance of actually passing this today, which would lead to the setting of guidelines and the publishing of pieces. One has, going through the first four sections, there's a lot of legalistic components, and similarly in number five, it also talks about the opportunity to be heard from a public perspective. Going to area six in this policy, and this is the area where we have most of the specific comments that relate to how we would lead this particular policy, one has to do with requesting formal agenda items. And so we're looking at people giving for something that would be on the formal agenda, a week's notice to the superintendent's office, because that would allow us to analyze the request, determine if that data can be gathered for the meeting, and we would also be able to gather information and add that to the agenda if at all possible. It obviously also notes that that would be able to be looked at for a period of time, and so, and also that the board chair will have a role in that particular piece of that conversation about how things get on and remain on the agenda. And then the second component has to do with public comment, and so laying out the pieces where, which would allow people to come and sign up to address the school board, talking about the methodology for that, but then also talking about how complaints might be handled, and so on and so forth. And we've looked at this policy on multiple occasions, trying to combine it in a way that was cohesive and coherent for everyone. So with that, are there questions on the policy as written?
I have a question suggestion in regards to open public comment, where it says the board may decide to hold certain types of meetings where public comment will not be. I'm wondering if there's a way we could determine that one of the two meetings of the month, we will have public comment, so that it doesn't seem arbitrary, like the meeting that we decide that we're not going to have open comment, especially if they happen to be requested at a time where it may be, you know, interpreted as such, and then that way takes the, the human, you know, aspect to that.
I, I thought we already had discussed that and that it was going to be opposite when we had school delegations come, so...
And that language was in a prior version of this policy, so I'm guessing that you, Superintendent Yunowski, felt like that should be in the administrative guidelines instead of in the policy itself, is my assumption, but...
Yes, one of the conversations we had is there's a, there's got to be a separation between overall policy and the specific procedures guiding us. And so we wanted to keep some of those pieces out of the procedures. Once we get the policy passed, the board then instructs administration to create the procedures, which would then include, you'll see there's a handout, which won't be part of policy, but we actually have one that lays out the expectations for public policy or public comment. We would also lay that out in terms of normal language and much simpler language that we would have to communicate broad-based, and that would be an expectation of administration. And the board has been very clear that we're looking at, once a month is where public comment would allow to be signed up for, and the board had also talked about timing and methodology for communication, which we also didn't want to put into policy itself, but those clearly become procedures. Procedures of administration to then bring back to the board to clarify and make sure we're creating procedures in alignment with the overall policy.
Thank you. And then the other thing we were doing along with it was having that, all of that information on the board, the school board website, the tab on the website, so you could just click on that and it would be really...
Very clear.
Clearly stated, exactly, in a very simple way, how to...
Then I do have another question about all these, the legal components of what data privacy, and I apologize if this is something that you went all over, because I wasn't here last, the last time we met, but there's, there seemed to be a confusion a few months prior about what was public data, about, you know, the board hoping to do ethical work in maintaining privacy data, and then some groups stating that, you know, Minnesota, there's no such thing, like all files are public if anybody requests them. So I think I know myself finally, you know, after some back and forth, but I think it would be, if we could clarify to the public, you know, going forward with this, what is that supposed to, to mean, and how we ourselves decide, like, which one is what? Because just want to make sure that we all have accurate information and that we are very transparent.
It seems to me from a practical standpoint, I mean, I really value the observation that you're making, Paula, it seems to me that from an implementation standpoint, we're going to have a small number of folks who are really interested in diving into the sort of real details of, well, is it public, is it private, and maybe motivated to actually look at statute. So having the capacity to look at this, which I know we will have, is important. I think then our much larger constituency is, is going to be members of the public for whom that level of detail isn't necessarily important. And it's always going to be the case, I think, that the board chair, or whoever's acting in the role of chair during a particular meeting, will need to be vigilant for enforcing that aspect of the policy, because I don't think we can expect that, I think it would go against sort of the spirit of our open public comment, that, that we would be expecting people to be like really familiar with statute, all of that stuff. So I think that it's kind of a shared responsibility, you know, there's the responsibility that we would have to sort of, in, in relatively straightforward language, to set that expectation out there, so that it's clear walking in. But then there's also going to be presumably the responsibility upon the board chair during the actual public comment session to kind of monitor, you know, if, if those boundaries are being crossed.
So when I had requests come in, you know, up until now, I just, in my response email confirming that they were going to, that people were going to present public comment, I just shared basically what, what that, I listed the statute and then just gave a very basic explanation of what, what was expected. And I think what we talked about is that in the guidelines, that would be included as something, because if they're going, if the request is going to go to the board secretary, then that same information would be sent back to them. So they would have something in writing in advance, but agreed, there still is a responsibility in the moment.
And I think we've talked about, and I'm sure Steve will be presenting some of this stuff, but as you've talked about, sort of the implementation piece, that, that, you know, will have sort of process, and in the moment, you know, part of the spirit of the open public comment is that, that once a month meeting, it's an opportunity for an individual to, without necessarily having to go through the whole week's notice piece to address, to sort of address the board on any given topic, and, but we also would have to have in the moment presenting some level of guidance on the sort of guardrails. And I know you've already talked about that.
I got that from the draft, that it's really, we have all these procedures, but in the moment, if board chair determines this is bordering into what's outside the boundaries of what's allowed. But I think I, I'm more, I'm thinking of the moment before we even get to the meeting, where someone presents, like, I want to talk about this, and then if we are going to say this is not allowed because of privacy data, I want to make sure that that is really, that we're not, that it is not like a blanket thing that we're just saying, oh, this is, you know, privacy, because then there were, will be people who'll say, well, actually not really. So that's the point I was trying to...
I think it's pretty specific, what is and isn't allowed. So I agree with that.
Yeah, because people can raise general concerns. I think if they start talking about allegations against a specific individual or student, that is when those data privacy laws will really kick in. So I, but I 100% agree with you.
Alright, so even if we pass this policy today, that means that my work is just beginning, because then drawing out guidelines that I assume will take a significant amount working through to make sure that we're, we're presenting those in a clear and effective way will be that next step. Any other questions about 206?
So I don't think that I've heard anything at this point that would require us to take it back for rewriting, so having said that, I would be willing to move the policy as amended.
I will second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and policy 206 passes.
Yeah, yeah, yes. So then as an update reminder, I'll be back to the board with, we'll call it 206.1, which is how we do guidelines. At one of the two meetings in November, I will try to have a first draft for us to review and begin that conversation about, so what does this, what does this actually look like in practice, based on those pieces of procedure that we talked about at the board superintendent level, to take that to the next steps.
And then we could add, you know, the, the sheets that we hand out at the beginning and things like that could be included on there.
Absolutely.
So we could see it in advance.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we move on to policy 926.
All right, and so again, this is the public relations slash involvement policy, where we combined two policies that had previously been there. Just as a reminder, these are not required by law policies, these are policies that we have used. And as we analyze our policies, you know, there is a separation between the mandatory legal policies, and then also knowing that, over the years, Richfield School Board has added policies that are important to our district, that are important to what's happening at that time. And so there are times where it has been very important to talk about the importance of public relations, community involvement, and having people participate in our district.
My one question is responsibility for implementation. It says, the superintendent is directed to develop administrative guidelines. So is this another one where you will be coming back to us with administrative guidelines to review?
Lucky me, absolutely. 926.1.
I, some of these small language changes were things that I had communicated after the last review, so thank you for making those changes.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that overall, despite it not being sort of a mandatory policy, I think that there is value in this policy to the extent that it continues to remind us of, of this particular commitment. So I would, I mean, even though it's a somewhat general sort of aspirational policy, I, I think that there's still value.
I am happy to move policy 926 for approval.
I second. Change of motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Ms. Cole. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and policy 926 passes. So we move on to policy 953, visitors to school district buildings and sites.
Right, and so similarly, because we just love to do guidelines, as you note, and create procedures, we are looking at visitors to school districts, buildings and sites, and basically adding administrative responsibility to this particular one after feedback from the board. And then similarly, as we look at visitor limitations, section A at the bottom, procedures to implement will be as an addendum to the policy. And so if we pass this, we'll also work to realign those procedures, because as we know, we do have visitor policies at all of our buildings at present, they just may not necessarily be fully aligned systemically across the district, and that's something we want to continue to work on as a board and as a district. So yes, the answer is 953.1 is on the work docket also.
In 2B, did we mean to say their position, or are we okay in saying the position? Because it used to be its when it was only the school board?
Yeah, I agree, the grammar is a little awkward.
Okay. Do you want to change that to their?
Just the teacher, sorry.
I have been grammatically corrected. Thank you, Ms. Cole. So reaffirm their position?
So, this is a little bit jumping ahead. You had mentioned that upon approval of this policy, then there would be a, a step up some guideline writing and examining of building, sort of site-specific policies and alignment. Would it, would the expectation be that those guidelines and site-specific policies would be coming back?
Yes, so each of the, each of the addendum guidelines will be things that I would then bring back to the board to double check and make sure that we're all in alignment in pieces.
Well, absent the grammatical suggestion, I believe that the policy is looking in good shape, and I'd be happy to move it as amended.
I'll second.
Change of motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Brockie. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and policy 953 is passed, and we will await the guidelines in progress on that. So we move on to new business and board policy 653, field trips.
So as we continue our cycle of review, this is one that has been in place since 1995. We worked, as we've been doing, we are adding the components of the MSBA model policy that sort of bring things up to speed with statutes. You can see this is one that beats significant update and change, since things have changed significantly since the last review about 11 years ago. And so those have been put into place for a first read. And so again, this isn't produced for passage today, this is just produced for information. To see if there's any questions, feedback on language, also acknowledging that board members have and can give feedback in between the meetings to review before the next meeting. Any thoughts?
I had two questions. The first is about the extended trips section and the, the practice outlined there, that extended trip requests must be approved at each level. And it looks like this board is actually not new language, but it's part of the existing policy, and, and I'm not sure that this has happened during my time on the board. Is this something that is a current practice of ours, or it is not, and it should be?
It has been an informal mention, and it has, so what we found when we looked at this policy at the start of the year, that it had not been a practice.
Yeah.
And so we began to learn that, and we have implemented a procedure that requires multi-stage approval prior to approving field trips.
Great.
When there are things that are in question, I do bring them up in conversation with board members. We can certainly bring them to the full board for report and do those on a regular basis. And I certainly would do so if there are things that are controversial and questionable. So the question then is, does the board want to look at information about extended field trips, which would include one day overnight to one week, or trip overseas, or?
So I have a couple of thoughts and or questions.
Yeah.
Many of the extended trips that our students take, at least, and I think that these are generally speaking at high school level, although I think we have some middle school outings on occasion that may go overnight, many of those trips are recurring opportunities. You know, if it's not annual, it's maybe every other year. So I could see, I could see this, this playing out in a couple ways. You know, one, one opinion might be that if you've approved a trip once, if really the trip is material, everything the same, then you need to continue approving it sort of on an annual basis. A counter opinion on that may be that at the very least, annually having the list of approved trips presented to the board would at least allow us to continue to actively exercise our oversight, and just be aware of, you know, if, if we feel that there's any new situation arising that would lead to a reconsideration. I mean, I think it does, I think it does, the value in that, I think, is it does raise, sort of systemically within the organization, it raises the level of accountability, you know, sort of recognizing that, you know, that these activities are designed with a purpose in mind, and, and that, you know, we're engaging upon them with a sort of a serious purpose. So I guess I'd be in favor personally of at least sort of having an annual look, even if we're not diving into the details of each one, but to sort of see, well, here's all the ones, these, these have all been previously approved, and.
Right. Just, just for clarification, so historically, field trips haven't been approved by the board. If you take a look at the specific language, it was very purposely put in, and I did check back as I was trying to understand the process, is approved, and it had said following review by the school board. And so as we'll look at that particular language, review of the school board was sharing information with the board, but it hasn't been specifically approved by the board in the past. And so there, there is then that question about, do they become reviewed by the board? Yes, that, as we found the policy, that is absolutely something that should occur based on past language. The question then is, does the, does the school board approve those, or does the school board just review those as we move forward?
Right. And, and actually, interestingly enough, when you look at the exact words, they're talking about the trip request form completed and approved at each level.
Yes, and we have fully implemented that this fall. There is a multi-stage process. I do, those do come to me. If they are new trips, or there are trips where I have question, I have actually brought them up to board chair Malick. We've had a couple of conversations about a couple of field trips. After we looked at that with both of our perspectives, a couple of them went forward, a couple of them did not. And we could certainly bring that for review to the full board. Or we could also have a presentation for the full board, depending on how, how we wanna handle that.
I assume that the language was changed to be what is in front of us, which is more active, completed and approved at each level, based on the MSBA suggested language, which makes me feel as though that is perhaps a practice that we should then utilize, I think, you know, for the oversight reasons that Peter was sharing. So I would be more likely to support that if that is what is in the model policy. And, I mean, it can be on the consent agenda, it doesn't need to be something that we individually discuss, unless there are specific questions, in which case that approval form could be pulled off of the consent agenda and be a discussion item.
Right. I mean, I, the only, the only challenge that I'm having is to just make sure that we're walking the, getting the balance right between adding another layer of bureaucracy and doing due diligence. So just gotta, kinda think about that.
Board member roles, right? I mean, that's, that's one of those to reflect on. I think we don't obviously have to make a decision today. I know that in the, I can definitely go back to MSBA to check and see about their specific language, and then to determine review versus approval. And then if board members would like to reflect on if they would like a systemic review or approval. I can tell you that having now fully implemented a procedure to follow with a specific form for all of those approvals, which is where some of the changes are, they're, they're fully and thoroughly reviewed. I would say half of them are sent back for change prior to approval, to make sure that we have adequate adult supervision, that there is a specific connection that's laid out and thought out fully well. Not to say that that wasn't happening in the past, just to say that it wasn't laid out in, in a form-based format to fully articulate pieces. And so board members would wanna think about whether that does become part of a board member review, consent agenda possibly, and/or whether that becomes a board member approval. That actually would be the consent agenda.
Right.
I'm not sure there's a right or wrong answer, so as, as you point out.
It'd be interesting to see what other districts are doing, if, what is the common practice.
Okay. And we can check that and have that for our next board.
So am I hearing correctly, Steve, that the, the process, and I'm just trying to experience this as it would be experienced by a teacher, or parent group, or whomever was organizing an extended field trip, that the process would be that there's the form completion that includes all the students who are going on the trip, and that that would be kind of an expected process, that, that would at least go up through the administrative level, and that's kind of your current practice?
Yes, the current practice now, and we have increased the rigor of it.
Yeah.
Is there is a form filled out by the teacher or the sponsoring field trip supervisor, or proposed supervisor, goes to their administrator. Said administrator walks through it to make sure that they're willing to approve it based on the information there. So that may include revision at that time. That then comes up to my office, superintendent, to approve or not at that time. And then if it is a new one, or if there is something questionable, like I said, I have in my regular conversations with board chair Malick, we've had that conversation and talked about that also to that level.
And, and just from a pragmatic implementation standpoint, given the bi-monthly schedule for board, to board, for the board meeting, is there any reason for us to believe that having a process that's partially dependent upon that time constraint would put undue constraint on the process?
There is a clause in there basically saying that if there is a.
Contingency or contingencies.
Contingency piece.
Yeah.
It can go quicker if need be.
Yep.
So I don't think that that is necessarily the case. I can say from having approved now a small set of them, there have been a couple that I sent back and just said, no, I'm sorry, I'm not turning it around in a day. And so having an overnight field trip with one day's notice, I, we're just gonna say no.
Yeah.
I will say on the other side, on a slightly less rushed scenario, week and a half, we have been able to turn that around, but some of it has to do with board meeting timing and, and schedules and things of that nature. I've also had people who have planned out an April field trip at this point, which is a recurring one. And so there's really a wide range at present of, of how that's working out.
Well, I'm all in favor of, of building flexibility into, again, because we don't wanna constrain it unnecessarily if there's, if there's actually a real good educational opportunity that becomes available.
So what I will do is I will review what other districts are doing in this area, bring back for read number two, and a conversation about review versus approve at the board level. And we will also take a look at any of the other components of the policy, and see that one on the 14th of November for read number two, and some additional information.
Okay. So we will move on to the resolution establishing polling places for school district elections not held on the day of a state election.
So yes, so as you see in your board packet, there's a couple, this is the second of the new sets of requirement, just similar to the review and comment. And we have had polling places published, but coming straight from our attorney, we would adopt this particular resolution so that if need be, we could use combined polling places for elections occurring in calendar year 2018. And so this is one of the state requirements. Typically, just as a procedure and process, we have not, as a district, at present as a practice, gone off of the November timeline, at least in my four years. Don't know prior to then, but this is actually required as part of a state procedure and policy. We also don't necessarily anticipate at this time a school board-based election a year from now, but this is actually required to do now for the calendar year 2018. So working with our attorney and our consultant, we have the following resolution to present, which would then push this through for next year in terms of the combined polling place component.
Thank you for including the overview about why, why we do this and why it is important. That was helpful. I am willing, able and excited to move the resolution as presented.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Ashmead. This is a resolution, so I will pull the board. Ms. Brockie?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so the resolution passes. So we will now move on to reserve teacher pay scale, and we have Mr. Miltz here today.
Great, thank you. I wanted to bring forward tonight policy 455, reserve teacher pay for the board's review and hopefully approval. Recently, Richfield Public Schools had the opportunity to participate in a survey of over 30 local, excuse me, and statewide school districts, putting in reserve teacher pay. One of the reasons for doing this is we're conducting the survey to get an idea of what supports are needed in classroom, what other districts are paying, to make sure that those supports are in the classroom. Through the survey, we found a need to increase our rates of pay for our reserve teachers in order to remain competitive in the marketplace for the limited number of substitute teachers that are available for the school districts in the local metro. In addition, analysis of our data from the last year, 2016 and 17, indicated that we have a high percentage of absences on Friday in comparison to the other days of the week. So what we're recommending So what we're recommending as changes for the policy is first and foremost, an increase from $115 a day to $135 a day for our full-time reserve teachers, who are either first-year, fully licensed teachers, or short-call licensed substitute teachers. And then, an increase of $120 a day to $145 a day, from 120 this year to 145, for any teachers that are fully licensed, and also our short-call sub-teachers that have worked more than 30 days in the school district in the prior school year. So for those that have experience working with Richfield Public Schools and are working most of those days for us during the course of the year, we want to recognize them in their second year by giving them a higher rate, and show our value to them. Also, for half-day rates for those same two sets of teachers, the first set would be an increase of 75, from $75 a day to $85 for the half-day period. So that's four and a half hours or less per day, they would get that increase from 75 to 85. And again, for that second set of teachers, which are the fully licensed and short-call licensed in their second year, working more than 30 days in the prior year, would go from $85 currently to $95 in the second year. Currently in the policy, we also have a bonus program. If you work more than 20 days in the school year, then you're getting $100 for each set of 20 days you work, and we pay that out twice a year to the teachers. It's quite challenging logistically to keep track of all of those days, because there are several teachers that do work greater than 20 days and multiple sets of 20 days. So we're proposing removing that and addressing the issue of a higher number of absences on Fridays by creating a Friday incentive rate. And what that rate would be is we would take our 135 rate to 150 on Fridays for those teachers that are fully licensed in their first year with the district, and also those short-call licensed teachers. And then for those that are in their second year with Richfield and have that experience, we'd take that rate from 145 to $160 for the full-time teachers. For those that are working the four and a half hours or less, those rates would go from the proposed 80, or the proposed $85 to $95 for the half-day for that first group of teachers, and the proposed 95 to 105 for the half-day for that second group of teachers that are in their second year. We believe that these increases will position the district to be extremely competitive for the limited number of reserve teachers available, and will help to ensure that we continue to provide the support for both the students in the classroom and our teachers. What questions do you have?
How much more will this cost the district annually?
If we have the same number of absences that we're looking at for the 1617 school year, we're estimating, depending on whether or not we can reduce the number of teachers who are bringing to cover the absences that aren't being filled by substitutes, if we're able to cover those, we're estimating that these increases will be in the neighborhood of $75,000 increase to what we're currently paying.
Oh, okay, that'd be more than that, thank you.
We do have, though, because when you pay the substitute teachers, they're paying way less than the teacher's salary. So I am curious, as a teacher, to understand how that balances out, because I'm always thinking, how old money leftovers, especially for teachers who don't have sick pay left? I also like to know if we have a higher rate for long call subs, or if we even have those here?
We do have long-term substitutes, and we have a different pay structure for them that isn't changing in the policy. That's indicated at the bottom of the policy, on what that pay is, and I believe that goes to the first step of the teacher contract rate, depending on the time. Correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, on that?
And then finally, what are we doing as a district to encourage teachers to take their mental health base on, you know, to kind of pace in ourselves, to avoid this, because it's really hard when there's no substitute teachers, and you need to start pulling resource teachers from all the classrooms, from small group instruction. And it is true, subs, especially in the spring, it's really hard to find substitute teachers on Thursdays and Fridays, so... Do we talk about that with our?
Absolutely, we've been having ongoing conversations.
Are we welcoming to teachers when they have to have a day, or are we telling them, you know, how sick are you? I mean, I know the contract doesn't allow for that, but I just want to make sure that we have an open space where, you know, teachers can feel comfortable saying, you know, I need this day, and plan it. Because when you can plan an absence, students benefit and the teacher benefits, and you come back and find less chaos when you return to your classroom.
Absolutely. We have ongoing conversations with the union and are working with them to collaborate on ways to work with the teacher group, to find ways to reduce the number of teacher absences, but also, on the flip side of it, is what you're talking about, is we work with our principals pretty closely, to make sure that they have open relationships with their teachers, and that their teachers feel comfortable coming forward and talking to them. Teachers do have built-in, for full-time teachers, three discretionary days within their contract to be able to use at their discretion. And there's no questions from the district typically. So that's kind of that piece that we talk about, of feeling comfortable coming forward and not feeling like they always have to give a reason or have to justify the absence. Those discretionary days help support them in that role, to be able to take those days throughout the year that they may need.
I think you addressed this, but I just want to make sure I have it correct in my head. The, the reason for the Friday incentive pay is both that we have more teachers absent on Friday, and we have a harder time getting reserve teachers on Friday, and this, this is specifically going to help us address the second piece of that, right?
That's correct. 25% of our absences are on Fridays. And 27% of our unfilled absences are on Fridays.
Okay. And then my other question was, it's also about the Friday incentive pay, which I think is a really smart idea, so, just wanted to be upfront about that. For all of the other non-Friday days, there are different rates for, you know, if it's an assignment versus if it is that four and a half hours or less, but I don't see that same distinction for Friday incentive pay?
Yes, that is an amendment that we made to the, to your board packet this morning, so you can see that under C and D.
Okay.
That we do have those increased.
It's on the, yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I will pull it up right now.
And I think to clarify, we do have, if I understand correctly, the substitute teachers do have a choice from different school districts, right?
Absolutely.
As a different, separate database, so I think having an incentive, if I'm a teacher, a substitute teacher, and I have a choice of being here or there, that I'm going to choose the district that is...
Who wouldn't want to work in Richfield on a Friday for an increased pay rate, so, it's a great opportunity for our teachers.
I think sometimes they can think, oh, but, you know, and they all from nowhere, teachers, they can go wherever they choose.
It's a very competitive market, and a lot of us use the same substitute systems, and so they're all in the same system, and we can actually see which buildings they're choosing on certain days of the week versus, or which districts versus Richfield. So it's been very enlightening to look at the data and try and figure out ways that we can encourage them to come to Richfield and work in our classes with our students versus going to other school districts.
Thank you for pointing me to the updated version. My question was very obviously answered there.
I'm comfortable with the proposal, and would move that we accept this pay scale?
I second. So we have a motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Ms. Cole. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the reserve teacher pay scale has passed.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you, Mr. Miltier, we will move on to uniform guidance grace period.
All right, so the federal procurement expectations, federal guidance, for how we manage grants, changed. And we passed a, we passed a grace period to implement the changes. Well, we do have effective monitoring systems for our grants. There are some additional expectations to be implemented fully. We are continuing to implement those, but we need to continue the grace period through the end of the possible grace period, June 30th, 2018, to make sure that we're effectively able to implement each of these recommendations appropriately and get through the federal oversight process appropriately and effectively. So this would allow us to continue the grace period retroactive to July 1st, 2015, all the way through June 30th, 2018, at which point we should be able to be continuing on with full compliance and full compliance with the new expectations.
I would move that we go ahead and extend that deadline for the grace period as proposed.
I will second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the uniform guidance grace period passes. And we will move on to collective bargaining agreement with Education Richfield and Mr. Holgy, Chief Human Resource and Operations Officer.
Thank you. I'm pleased to have for you tonight approval, or a request for approval of the 2017-19 master agreement with Education Richfield. We had negotiated a tentative agreement earlier. This was passed and ratified by the teachers group last week on Wednesday, and it's recommended that the board approve this agreement. Essential financial changes to the agreement are included in your packet, and you have the full copy of the contract with all the additional information as well. But in 2017-18, it represents a 2% increase in the base salary across the board. No changes in our health or dental insurance or other benefits associated with that. A 2% increase in our co-curricular schedule for our coaches and other individuals who are working in that capacity. And with appendix D, which are some of the miscellaneous pay rate components of this, we increased the hourly rate for ALC and staff development for teachers. Their hourly rate paid to $34 in the first year, starting January 1 of 2018, so not going retroactive, but starting at that date. And we also increased the extended time for those individuals who have extended time contracts, like social workers and counselors, to $270 a day. And then in 2018-19, we looked at our schedule a little bit different and put specific dollar amounts on specific cells. Essentially, that ranges from $900 up to $1,700. There was about $1,250 that was put across the board in all of our steps 1 through 12. In the bachelor's levels, 12-plus, we had some smaller amounts that were associated with that. And then with our master's level, 20-plus year careers, and master's 16-plus year careers, we added some additional money in those categories as well. Again, we had no health insurance or dental insurance coverage changes as far as premiums were associated with that. We increased the co-curricular salary schedule by 2%. And then in appendix D, we increased the hourly rate for the ALC and staff development to $35, effective January 1 of 2019, so one year from that initial date, and then increased the extended time to $280 a day for those that were working in the social work and counselor areas, or other extended time contracts. In addition to that, there were a number of language changes that we included. We clarified that we require prior approval for unpaid leaves of absence, that individuals can't just call in and request an unpaid leave of absence for the following day. We clarified provisions associated with unrequested leaves of absence for part-time teachers, specifically the types and hours of positions that they have rights to, and clarified that the district has the right to determine what an FTE of a position is, or what constitutes a position, and are required to create positions for those individuals on ULA if it's not what's best meeting the needs of the district. It limits eligibility to recall from unrequested leave of absence to five years. Previously, we had after-five years, if they could show that they had taught in another district, then they would have that rights to recall, but we decided that that five-year limit was what we would move forward with and agreed with that as part of the process. We clarified the challenges for ULA are subject to the hearing and review procedures that are qualified in 122A40. Again, it's just a clarification of that. Provides district-paid cellphone stipend benefits for certain limited mobile teachers. Essentially, there's either the opportunity to have a cellphone or a $40 stipend at the district's discretion for those teachers. Most specifically, it really is just applicable to teachers in the early childhood special education program, where they are spending a good portion of their day, not at any one of our school sites, but actually working out in the homes with families and kids, so they have ready access to communication as needed. Moves the date that teachers request voluntary transfers from April 1 to March 1 of each year. This really helps us in our planning and staffing procedures, as we've seen ourselves, starting our staffing earlier, starting to hire teachers for the following year in March. It doesn't delay that, and clarifies that that's the best time for teachers to have that right, to be requested for those voluntary transfers, so they're fully considered for that process. It moves the date of probationary non-renewal notification from June 1 to July 1 of any year, which just gives the district a little bit more latitude for making final determinations as part of the process, and aligns that with the state statute. Clarifies that teachers charged with a felony who are proposed to discharge may be suspended without pay pending the outcome of any hearings and final determination, which again is a reference back into the statutory piece. Unfortunately, it's not something we've had to deal with, but something that just clarifies that in the event we ever are in that situation. It removes the requirement for annual salary notices as the information is available in the employee access center, and allows publication of agreements requirements to be, via posting on the website. So just some efficiencies of operation that are bringing us into kind of the technology age that we're afforded to. Two other provisions that are key to this agreement that aren't necessarily in the contract, but we have a memorandum of agreement with prep time earlier. You heard about some of the shortage of substitutes. One of the things that we find ourselves doing is using subs, using licensed teachers that are currently working for us in subbing for teachers when we don't have subs in place. That works well when individuals are giving up their prep time, but we also have some situations specifically at the elementary level where that isn't the most effective and efficient way to administer that. And so it provides the financial incentive for those teachers who are having, taking portions of a classroom because there is a teacher, a substitute that's missing to fill in for a teacher. So when we take a third grade class and divide kids up into four other classes, those teachers now will receive some compensation for that, and picking up that additional, the time that's needed to do replanning. And then, we also have a memorandum of agreement regarding an initiative review. Specifically, it identifies a meet and confer task force that helps us take another look at the programs and initiatives and the strategic plan, and some of those goals that we are setting out for the following year. It's much aligned with the work that we've already started working as a leadership team of how do we engage our broader community, and how do we engage staff in the work that we're doing. But it really does help us review those processes with Education Richfield specifically, look at how do we engage those individuals for additional perspectives, and how do we improve our work and make sure that we have, we're at the right place, moving forward at the right time with the group, and have that communication so that everybody understands, or our broader group understands, the work that we're doing. So, with that, that really highlights the work of that Education Richfield agreement. We are very pleased with the work and the process that we've moved forward with, and feel like we really are working together as a team and looking for the collaborative win-win approach, and finding a resolution that seems to meet the needs of everybody. So with that, I ask for your approval tonight.
Out of curiosity, you know what the teacher vote was?
I do not have the specific percentages, but I know that they passed it with very strong support.
Well, I think this has been a, really a very smooth process, and wanted to certainly thank you and your negotiating team for all the hard work, as well as the team from Education Richfield, I think, have been very committed and collaborative in the, in the negotiating process. We really appreciate that.
And I would say, you know, Pete and I attended the negotiations kickoff meeting in May, and I think one change that they made was having representation from each building, that was new, and I think that was, was a really good move, and it, just kind of the feeling in the room from the start was very collaborative, and everybody seemed very enthusiastic and wanting to work together, so, I think it was a great process.
So with those observations, and I'm hearing your report, Craig, I would be willing to, to move the approval. I'll second that.
Got your motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the collective bargaining agreement with Education Richfield passes. So we will move on to the RDLS Playground Grant, which is also a resolution.
And this is something also that you've seen a few times. We're taking another stab at it. We've had a couple runs, and I really appreciate Carly Kidd and her determination and diligence to stay on task and stay working towards this. This is a very similar grant application for playground improvements at Richfield Dual Language School. We see that it, there are some opportunities to expand the size of the playground, also expand the types of, types of playground equipment that is in place. And so, we attempted this last year, there was a playground last spring that was attempted. We've been encouraged to apply for this, and we're hopeful that we will receive the support this year to really move this project forward. As Richfield Dual Language School and the Parent-Teacher-Student Organization has been very active in trying to raise the funds to make this work out over the last number of years, and so, we're asking for your approval again tonight. They have identified $45,000 of resources that the Parent-Teacher-Student Organization would have available. We've committed $30,000 as a district to help support that work, and the grant request is for $75,000 for a $150,000 upgrade to that RDLS program. One of the things that we know about the equipment that is both at Richfield STEM School and Richfield Dual Language School is that there are a number of fields that aren't just, that are behind that, that are not just being used during the student day, but are being used for recreational activities with the city and things like that. And so, while this is at Richfield Dual Language School, that equipment at STEM and the equipment at Richfield Dual Language School really does serve the broader community, and we think that that is a huge enhancement for this specific project, given the location of where the fields are in relation to equipment that other kids are at, and siblings are sometimes at watching soccer practice, or softball practice, or things like that, for their other siblings and things like that, so we're hopeful that this will be approved this time. and things like that, so we're hopeful that this will be approved this time.
I just want to echo the appreciation for the PT SO at RDLS for their determination in getting playgrounds that their kids in the community deserves. I think that's wonderful, and I would just say if there are things that we can be doing to really, you know, put our weight behind this project this year, whether it's individuals or anything beyond this resolution as a board with Hennepin County, sign me up.
Very good.
Well, so proactively, I did have, as Mr. Holgy indicated, we were encouraged to participate in this conversation. We had applied last year. We did not receive that at that time. As we know, Richfield's former mayor, now Hennepin County Commissioner Mayor Gittell, is the Hennepin County Commissioner who has significant input into the conversation. So she and I did have a conversation about this proactively prior to the application process, and so obviously, as board members know our former mayor, encouragement on her part to continue her longtime support of Richfield Public Schools, and she has been a supporter of Richfield Public Schools, so we will just continue to remind her of how much we appreciate her partnership now and into the future.
I will move the resolution as presented.
I will second the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Tensing. This is a resolution, so I will pull the board. Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Ms. Brockie?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and our DLS Playground Grant Resolution is passed.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll hear back on that soon. We'll move on to donations.
Okay, so we have four donations on the docket today. Christopher A. Carlson donated $250 to the Ellen Carlson Scholarship Fund, establish a rich field high school for students who have been served by a special education individualized education plan. Thank you, Christopher Carlson. Andrew and Stephanie May donated $100 to Richfield Dual Language School to be used for student field trip fees, so thank you to Andrew and Stephanie May. Richfield STEM School PTO donated $600 to the school to be used for hanging door signs, so thank you to the PTO at STEM. And the Lutheran Women's Mission League made a generous donation of school supplies to Centennial Elementary, and this auxiliary has adopted the school and plans to continue donating needed items throughout the school year, so thank you to the Lutheran Women's Mission League.
I will move that we accept these donations with gratitude.
I will second.
So a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we will accept those donations with gratitude. So we will move on to advanced planning and the legislative update with Superintendent Janowski.
So just as a reminder, we've asked board members, and we're going to ask them one more time, to reflect on things for our particular legislative agenda. This will be a conversation in November for us to discuss as a board to adopt an official platform, areas to engage our legislators on. AMSD is beginning that conversation around their official platform. They continue to be aligned to many of the areas that we have been in the past in regard to special ed cross-subsidy, ELL cross-subsidy, and then areas of mandate reduction, some of those other things that we've had a conversation about as a board. So again, it's a great time for board members to reflect. What are those larger legislative priorities that are important to Richfield Public Schools and that are important to our board members? And beginning in November and then in December, we'll work on our platform to work collaboratively with our legislators prior to that legislative session. And in the winter, we usually have that joint session with our legislators to engage them in that conversation and continue the ongoing dialogue and partnership we have with our representatives.
I will just reflect that the mandate reduction piece, I mean, this has come up last year as well, but the legislature is certainly interested in hearing from us about the specific mandates that can be, that can be perhaps removed if there are, if there are pieces that are just sort of bureaucratic hurdles or adds inefficiency to the system, they want to know about that. So at any rate, that's a call to our administrative support who's going to really know that stuff from the ground up, so.
So we will begin an analysis of that, take a look at this conversation as we continue on with ours as a board, so we'll take a look at some of those mandates also.
Okay, we move on to information and questions from the board. I will, I can share that we had our FPAC meeting last week, and we have two new members, which was really nice. They seemed very engaged, and we did get to do a tour of the high school, so we kind of got to see all the areas, kind of where they're projecting to have some improvements. It was kind of a really great experience. I've never been in a boiler room quite that big. It was very interesting, very loud and warm.
I had never been in a boiler room, period.
Do you have a listen, anything?
I noticed that.
I had two quick things. One, I was able to attend the Richfield Latino Family Association meeting on Friday night in this room, so it was great to spend some time with them and also have Amy Winter, Principal of the STEM School there, to talk with them about the work she is doing at STEM. And one of the things that I heard them say that they're excited about is to have principals from the different buildings also come spend time with them over the course of this year, and just wanted to share that they would love to have board members and others also joining them. So they typically meet once a month on a Friday evening, and I think, Steve, you're pretty good about including those meeting dates and times when you send events out to us, so I really enjoyed being there. I hope to go back soon and just wanted to really pass that invitation along.
Seriously, are they in English or Spanish?
So I think for my benefit and Amy's benefit, they did translate for us. I can follow a little bit along the way, but Christina Gonzalez was there and was doing real-time translation, so we could follow the conversation.
But they are...
Christina...
They're fully in Spanish, and it is translated, so we provide translation support, and we often think of translation support for Spanish families into English, but this is a meeting held in Spanish, and so it's...
In St. Paul, I was at several monk organizations. No translation, and I just sat there, you know, no idea what they were saying.
No, they provide translation for us, which is very generous of them.
But that's a great experience for any of us to be on the other side of being translated for.
Absolutely.
So if we haven't done it.
The second brief thing, I was able to go on Friday to the dedication of the new college at the University of St. Thomas. It's called the Doherty Family College, and it's a two-year school within the university that is in its first year, and I was just very excited to hear that several Richfield graduates are among the inaugural class at this Doherty Family College, which I think is trying to provide a really exciting and much-needed new pathway for students to attend a two-year school and then decide if they want to go on to a four-year program from there or if they want to pursue a career from there, but it was just neat to hear that there were several Richfield students that were being honored very, very excitedly by the group of people that were assembled to celebrate this new school.
Cool. That's cool. Is that in Minneapolis or St. Paul?
It's based in the Minneapolis campus, right downtown.
Okay. Couple of reminders for board members. Obviously, high school had conferences last week. K-8 will be having conferences tomorrow night and Wednesday, of which is a no-school day, and then obviously Thursday and Friday are no-school days. Other important information to remind board members, this is actually our last official meeting prior to the election on November 7th, so just as a reminder, we have a school board election and also a referendum election, and so it is just important that all of our constituents go out to vote because voting is an important process. It's important for our community, and regardless of what people's decision is, when they cast a ballot, it's important that everyone does go out and cast a ballot. So just as a reminder, this is our last meeting prior to that all-important election. And then also as a reminder, there is actually voting that occurs, no excuses early voting, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., basically Monday through Friday at City Hall, and so any day from now through the election, Monday through Friday, people can go out to vote, and so that's an important civic duty of all of us.
Okay, so we will move on to future meeting dates, which you have just alluded to. So November 13th, Monday at 7:00 p.m., we will be hosted by Centennial Elementary School, and then November 20th, Monday at 7:00 p.m. is a regular board meeting. Do we have any suggested or future agenda items?
I was thinking it might be helpful to have a conversation about student discipline in terms of the current programs and interventions that we use. I know we heard a little bit about PBIS through the context of the summer programming that we have heard and whether or not that could potentially be spread to other schools. I just feel like it would be helpful to get a sense of what programs we're currently using and the data that we currently have with respect to student discipline in our district.
Okay, I went to an MSBA coffee event last Friday, and it was kind of just a, more of an open group of metro school board members who just kind of got together to talk about some of the challenges of being a metro school district and things that boards deal with, and kind of tried to talk about a whole bunch of stuff, and then they're going to have like smaller groups going forward. You guys will probably all get invitations to those events too, but one of the things that was brought up, which was also brought up by a parent to me, was the opportunity to have like board listening sessions, and a couple of the, a couple of the board members there actually did board listening sessions, and in order to make it not be, you know, really cumbersome, we already have, you know, our own liaison assignments and other meetings, they just have, you know, like, I think it's like three times a year, and it's not the entire board, it's a couple of members go out. So I think it would be something for us to talk about. Maybe we could work it out with, you know, say, our building, whatever your building liaison is, you could be the board member and someone else could go with you, so there were two of you, something like that, and I would want a really outreach to people about attending and things like that, but I think it would be good for us to, I think, instead of waiting for people to come to us to really get out and ask for people's opinions about things, and for some people, it might be easier in that situation, like if you're in the media center of a school rather than in this situation, a lot of people would be more comfortable having a conversation like that, so I think that's something we should maybe bring up and talk about as a future agenda item.
Certainly connects back, as you think about that goal of a systemic engagement process from the board through the entire organization, something for board members to think about so that we would look at then systemically implementing and do it in a way that was equitable across our district, and so we can certainly bring that back for conversation and then talk about if we build that into a larger, into our larger plan. As a reminder, Mr. Polis, who was unable to be here, had talked about, and these will be presented in November, an update from our nutrition team, also an update from our transportation team. We also had an enrollment-based update, but there will be some enrollment and staffing pieces coming to the board in November, and obviously, some guideline work that will be coming back to this team with, and so that's just some of the highlights of things that should be on their future agenda for us.
That is all we have, and there is no closed session this evening.
No closed session.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Ms. Brockie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, we are adjourned.